Shroar.
Here.
Trent.
All right, we have Quorum. We'll go ahead and start with Senate Bill 136.
Good morning. First off, I want to tell you that my voice is a little funky, but I feel fine. It just sounds like a frog. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to present my bill. For the record, Carla Esslinger, Senator for District 33. This legislation is legislation that would help our students be better prepared for post-secondary opportunities. The Act would target two specific actions to ensure students are best prepared for post-secondary life, establishing that schools must set up a process for students to develop an ICAP and also fill out a FAFSA. First, 136 will require students to prepare individual career and academic plans called ICAPS. And basically, those are just plans that you put in place that says, "We've talked about it. We've had opportunity to discuss. What is your plans for the future?" If a student does create a plan to study, it only has to be reviewed regularly currently. Not like, it says regularly, so it's not annually. It's kind of subjective. The first change with this bill will make sure that parents and guardians of the students are involved in the process of developing an ICAP with school counselors and that the ICAP is reviewed annually. So there's the change. It's annually, not just regularly. And it's based on the needs of the student. And the last step for the ICAP will be achieved during each student's 12th grade year, which will include a declaration of the student's post-secondary plans. Now, this declaration is not set in stone, but it does require the kids to put some thought into it and have a plan and then, you know, a goal. So it makes them establish goals. But merely part of the process. It's a process more so than anything else. So the students have to begin to think about their future and make some solid plans. Ensuring parent involvement and annual revision to the ICAP for students will ensure that we are providing students with the best route forward to achieve their post-secondary goals. Second, the Senate Bill 136 would require school districts to establish a process, again, to help students complete a FAFSA form. This is not mandatory. Not every student has to fill out a FAFSA. It provides structure around the school district to make sure that opportunity is provided, not mandated. I want to make that really clear. Ensuring that students understand the financial opportunities that are gained through the FAFSA is essential. The National College attainment Network recently just released a report that in, actually it was January 24th of '22, that's their latest data, that throughout the country more than $3.75 billion in Pell Grants, which is usually the basic support structure for post-secondary training, is left on the students, left on the table by students not completing the FAFSA. 2021 high school graduates in Missouri left $71.3 million on the table. And this is just money sitting there that they could access if they were aware to support their post-secondary plans. Last year, this bill was voted unanimously out by this committee. And I want to thank you for providing me this opportunity to present my bill. We should have witnesses in the audience that have a much better voice than I do today. So they'll help explain in depth any details. And with that, Chairman Koenig, I welcome any questions.
Questions for the bill sponsor. Senator Razor.
Senator, thank you for introducing us again.
Well, thank you.
This year. I think, I think I was doing an interview somewhere and they said, you know, what's a bill that's behind the scenes that's not getting the attention that it should not? This is the bill I referred to. So I think this could be the most impactful bill that we could pass this year.
Right. I think there's some misconception around the requirements of FAFSA being mandated by high school before they could graduate. And I think that's what kind of made us stumble last year. And it's very clear, and they cleaned up the language to make it very clear, that that is not a requirement. It's more on the schools provide the opportunity to make this aware, students aware of these opportunities.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the bill sponsor? Seeing none, anybody testify in support of Senate Bill 136?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and Paul Wagner, representing the Council on Public Higher Education. Just want to go on record in support of Senator's bill. You know, for those students who are interested in pursuing a four-year degree, I think this would be a helpful way to kind of put some more structure and support behind them as they explore their options and understand the financial resources available to them. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for this witness. Seeing none, anybody else testify in support of Senate Bill 136?
Good morning. My name is Gary McCann with the Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development, here to speak in favor of this legislation as well. Couple of notes that I know we've been tracking is the amount of students in the state of Missouri that may not be taking advantage of this, that could receive some financial assistance. Going about 7,000 students could possibly benefit from understanding what options they have at their disposal. Again, this is not saying a student must go to a four-year or two-year, but we want them to understand what options they have available to them so that they can make an informed decision. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Seeing none, anybody else testify in support of Senate Bill 136?
Good morning. My name is Cara Corches. On behalf of the Missouri Chamber of Commerce and Industry, also in support specifically on the ICAP portion, we think it's a good thing to get students thinking early on about their career path. And so we're happy to support again this year and can take any questions you may have.
Anybody else testify in support?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Mike Loda-Wiggin, on behalf of the Missouri Council of School Administrators, going record in support of the bill. You know, I really appreciate this committee's dedication to looking at alternative ways of how we go about education and focusing on some things that matter, particularly at the local level. Anything that we can do to create these sort of experiences between a child and their, a student and their, and their school, to put them on the right path is, are the places we need to move. And we need to move away from areas where we have too much federal or state control of our classrooms that are dictating what is going on and distracts us from being able to do this sort of things that are included in this bill. So happy to go on record in support of the bill.
Anybody else testify in support?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Chris Ropie, here on behalf of the Missouri Community College Association, in support of the legislation.
All right. Anybody else in support?
Good morning. Stacey Priest, representing Aligned. Happy to be here this morning. One of the things that we like about the ICAP, it's forcing students to think about what they're going to do after high school. Not, "What am I going to do for the rest of my life? I have to pick a career now." But they're going to have to do something, whether they go into the military, they decide to work for a while, they want to go to a college, a training program. That is a decision they will have to make. So getting them thinking about it during high school makes a lot of sense. And then with the FAFSA, I mean, $71 million left on the table says a lot. We wouldn't want any kid to miss an opportunity to go to college simply thinking that he or she didn't have the resources. So we are happy to support this bill.
All right. Anybody else testify in support of Senate Bill 136?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Rand Shields with the Missouri School Board Association. Just want to go on the record as us too, especially on the ICAP part. I mean, future planning leads to future success. So, for our students.
Anybody else testify in support? Anybody testify in opposition? Senate Bill 136?
Good morning. My name is Dr. Mary Byrne, and I'm here to testify in opposition to 136. First of all, the bill establishes, it says that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education shall establish the process by which the students would be engaging in this consideration of their future. It also deletes the word guidance counselor and just has students parent or garden and the, and the school's counselors as discussing with the student their individual career. The problem is, as I brought up in my testimony for SB 85, is that the Business Roundtable is behind this transfer, fundamental transformation of education. Lou Gersoner had written Reinventing Education: Entrepreneurship in America's Public Schools. His whole point was to view students as human capital and to have the, the schools become the Human Resource Department for these corporations. The Business Roundtable is working hand in hand with the Council of Chief State School Officers to promote these ideas. They have published a document called Destination Known, which should be frightening to any free country, because what they're using is data collected on the students and data from the Department of Labor to merge and counsel students into the pathway they should be going. I have provided copies of Debbie DeMines' Stealing America, in which she describes the tract of these checkpoints for guiding students along the way to their career path. I have also provided an excerpt from Debbie, Donna Hearn's Paychecks and Power. This is all stemming from Mark Tucker's model, which was introduced to you with Hillary Clinton's Dear Hillary letter. And I have other documentation as well that I'm going to leave for your review, including the description of poly-technical education from the Soviet Union that describes vocational and academic schooling, which is translated as college and career readiness. And it is done for the sake of reducing the emotional status of the difference between professions and careers. In other words, equity. And what we're experiencing is what Mark Tucker introduced into this country in terms of the Soviet model of education. As people who have sworn to uphold and support the Constitution, I hope you seriously consider the information I've given you and adhere to supporting the constitutional purpose of public education, which according to Thomas Jefferson, was to understand every citizen, the information he needs to understand his duties to his neighbors and country and to know his rights, not the preparation of workforce. Thank you.
Questions for this witness? Seeing none. Anybody, anybody else testify in opposition? Senate Bill 136?
Good morning. I thank you for this opportunity. I'm really new at this kind of stuff. I'm not a lobbyist. I don't, I'm not paid to come here. I'm a mom and a grandma from Springfield, Missouri. I did work with the Head Start Program, and I was a parent educator for parents as teachers. I've also done youth group for a long time. I'm really concerned. I've traveled to 13 nations. I lived in Europe for two and a half years. And I'm really concerned at the direction that our educational system is headed. And when I came back from Europe and moved into Springfield, I was like, "Ah, no, no. We need to do something different." So when I looked at this bill and anything that, in my humble opinion, anything that DESI is involved in right now is going the wrong direction. I have friends who are teachers, educators. I have friends who are on school boards that are reaching out to me all the time. I have, I have friends who are in administration, and they're like, "The pressure that we are under to conform." Teachers are leaving in droves. When I was growing up, we had guidance counselors that took care of this kind of stuff, that actually knew their students and asked questions. "What do you want to do? And how can I help you achieve that?" Not, "These are the only two options you have." When I was in France, you had to choose a career path when you were like in junior high, and there was no option to change. There was no option to change. DESI is not an elected organization. When Dr. Frank was here, he said, "We have the largest conglomerate over our education system in any state in the United States." What are we doing? If we just keep throwing money and new programs at something without really looking at a solution, not just for now, but for generations, how's this going to affect your kids and your grandkids? How are we going to keep tightening this belt? This may sound like freedom, but it's not. Thank you for the opportunity.
Questions for this witness? Seeing none, anybody else testify? You're free to go. Anybody else testify in opposition?
I am new, right?
Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Arne C. A. C. Deanoff, state public advocate. And basically, I'm opposed to SB 136. We have many opportunities that are given to students at the present. It's a, we have a duplication problem here in Missouri. We duplicate program after program in several, several different areas, both with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Department of Higher Education, and Workforce Development. It's amazing of how many duplicated programs all meet the same goal, but they're written in different code words, but they all mean the same thing at the end of the day. There are workforce development bills after bills that are both in the House of Representatives and before the Senate this session. There are so many programs the community college districts offer students. The St. Charles Community College was just given by a governor's grant of, I believe it's $18 million to build a new state-of-the-art facility in the western part of the county, of St. Charles County. But they can't get water and sewer from the city of Wentzall. And they're going to have to spend upwards of $3 to $5 to $8 million or more to bring water and sewer to that building. But it's going to offer more students, more availabilities, more educational opportunities after 12 years of public school system or the private school system. The $77.3 million on the table, that, that's kind of a shame that it's being left there. Maybe the Department of Higher Education and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education need to do a better public awareness program. Get out in the schools, get out in the communities across Missouri, and make sure that districts know about this money being left on the table. We're throwing so much money at these programs, but we're not getting the results as Missourians. We're not furthering our educational goals. As a matter of fact, we're lacking our education goals. We're wasting taxpayer dollars, and I'm asking for some type of consolidation effort on these many programs to achieve the same exact goal at the end of the day. You can only reinvent the wheel two or three times. You can't keep reinventing the wheel at every legislative session. We throw tax money, but where are the results that we need here in Missouri? That's my testimony, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for listening to me.
Questions for this witness? Seeing none, anybody else testify in opposition to Senate Bill 136? Anybody testify for informational purposes only? Do you have any closing remarks, Senator?
No, just thank you for the opportunity to present my bill. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes our hearing on Senate Bill 136. I'll make a motion to go into executive session. It's been seconded. All those favors say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. I'll make a motion to bring up Senate Bill 40. It's been seconded. All those favors say aye. All those opposed? Senate Bill 40 is Senator Raiders' bill dealing with background checks. She presented on a committee substitute, which added background checks in residential care facilities and also marijuana facilities. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adopt the substitute. It's been seconded. All those favors say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Discussion on the substitute. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to do pass Senate Committee Substitute for Senate Bill 40. It's been seconded.
Chairman Koenig.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bratton. Senators Arthur, Beck, Gannon, Hoskins, Razor, Shroar, Trent.
All right, you've due past Senate Committee Substitute for Senate Bill 40. I'll make a motion to do pass Senate Bill 122. It's been seconded. All those favors say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Senate Bill 122 was Carla Mays, dealing with mental health. Students that are, get exempt from going to school, discussion. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to do pass Senate Bill 122.
Chairman Koenig.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bratton. Senators Arthur, Beck, Gannon, Hoskins, Razor, Shroar, Trent.
All right, you've due past Senate Bill 122. I'll make a motion to bring up Senate Bill 175. It's been seconded. All those favors say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. This is dealing with work permits. We do have a substitute. I know there was some concern that if we just eliminated everything, that there would be nothing in place to verify that the parents did sign off. So we did add a section which would require a form by the Department of Labor that the parents could fill out or the business could provide to the parents that would be required for the parents to sign off for those kids that are working between the age of 14 and 16. That's what's in the sub. Discussion. Senator Beck?
I appreciate you working with me on this, this bill, but I am still going to be a no, because I mentioned it to you yesterday. But I appreciate you working with me.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the Senate Committee Substitute. It's been seconded. All those favors say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Any further discussion on the sub? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to do pass Senate Committee Substitute for Senate Bill 175. It's been seconded.
Chairman Koenig.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bratton. Senators Arthur, Beck, Gannon, Hoskins, Razor, Shroar, Trent.
All right, you've due past Senate Committee Substitute for Senate Bill 175. I'll make a motion to go out of executive session. It's been seconded. All those favors say aye. All those opposed? We are actually going to stand at ease for about 15 minutes while we wait for Senator Coleman. So, or actually, we'll go in recess until 9:15.
Senators Arthur, Beck, Gannon, Hoskins, Razor, Schrader, Trent.
All right, you've due passed Senate Committee Substitute for Senate Bill 175. I'll make a motion to go out of executive session. It's been seconded. All those favors say aye. All those opposed. We are actually going to stand at ease for about 15 minutes while we wait for Senator Coleman. So, or actually, we'll go in recess until 9:15. All right, we will now have a hearing on Senate Bill 163.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Thanks for hearing this bill. This was a bill that I filed in 2021 when I was looking at trying to find some opportunities for the state to create more workforce training and kind of cast a broader net and was looking internationally at some of the things that people were doing. And this is an idea that is kind of out there. No other state is doing it, but what it does is it says that if a private company wants to develop a program that would allow them to train employees, that would substantively increase the amount of money that they are going to make, that the state will split as a tax credit with that employer, the increase in that employee's income tax level. So if you're going to take an income level from $30,000 a year and increase it to $100,000 a year, then the state will get more, right? Because we're getting not just the 30, but we're getting, you know, the other $35,000 worth of tax increase up to, you know, 65. And then the other 35, we would split with the, with...
What about potential fraud? I don't see stopgaps in the legislation that would avoid potential fraud or stopgaps to avoid program waste or duplicative services. 12 years in this bill is way too long. There's no guarantees and I'd like to see some type of assurance of return on investment. How do we know that these companies are going to be around 12 years from now? I'm against tax credits. We as a state are tax creding, tax credits are choking our budget and our income streams. It's choking our state, handcuffing us for the next 12 years, and I'm admirably opposed to doing that. Tax credits are sold as a commodity and they make overnight millionaires. For those reasons, I'm opposed to this bill. I don't think that there's any need. I don't think that there's a need to give it to private entity who's going to make a 30% to 40% profit built into their contract. That's my testimony, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate it.
Questions for this witness? See none? Anybody else testify in opposition to Senate Bill 163? Anybody to testify for informational purposes only on Senate Bill 163? Seeing none? You have anything to close with?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.